The Commissioners' Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on June 20, 2022, 10:00 AM, Commissioners' Court Room, County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is identification and the pledge of the U.S. and Texas flag. Commissioner Berry will read those.
Die with me, please. Heavenly Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. We continue to pray for the people of Ukraine. We ask that you continue to watch over our health care workers, those who serve in our military, our first responders, and those who you've called to teach our children. We ask that you graciously share your infinite wisdom so this assembled Commissioners' Court may make decisions that best serve the people who have called us to serve. It is in your blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the big Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and/or concerns, and I've got a few who want to speak. Scott Hester.
Good morning. What I came here was concerns about the striping on Dillashaw Tap Road of North Bryan from Table Road out past 2776. It's been double striped, and you have areas that are over a mile long that are flat. And the concern is, I'm curious why the striping does not correlate with the Texas MUTCD design plans in that manual, because there's no areas in these flat, straight areas that has a lot of traffic intersections. And with that, you know, I can understand the striping is to assist travelers in areas that have obstruction, side obstructions, to tell you not to pass and that kind of thing, whether it's a hill or curve. And then when it's an open area, you have the single stripe or the actual stripe that's not solid to let you, that allows you to pass. So I would like for y'all to really look at that area of Dillashaw Tap to restripe it to where it meets the Texas guidelines on traffic control, because the speed limits control speed. I don't know if it was done for that reason or whatever reason it was put up, but speed limits in law enforcement should control speed. This will allow people to not break the law, because if somebody were to pass somebody else, it'd still be in the confines of the speed limit out there. They're breaking the law because it's a double stripe where you shouldn't be passing. And that's telling people not to pass. So, you know, I'd like for y'all to take a look at this roadway and design it in accordance with the guidelines, so that, you know, just like every other area of the Brazos County, because you can go to any areas, the speed limits are higher, it's striped according to the design of the roadway, is striped according to the parameters that are existing out there, whether it's curved or hills and such like that. They cause side obstructions, and this one is not. And I'd just appreciate if y'all would go out and...
Okay. And while we can't have interaction discussion, I mean, I don't know that you've reached out to Roden Bridge and talked to anybody out there, our engineers.
No, I have not.
That's probably where you probably ought to go first, and I'm sure they'll be receptive to...
Who would be the person for me to talk to?
Profana Bandry.
She's, well Fred, they're both here.
Oh, and Fred, Fred's here too. Fred Payne, they're in the back, back there. I know, I see Fred, but in that back area back there. So you can have discussion after the meeting, if you can catch one of them.
Would you stand? Oh, you're already standing. I just wanted to make sure you started.
So if you catch one of them afterwards.
Okay, will do. Thank y'all.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. Roy Flores, 507 East 31st Street, Bryan, Texas. My father opened his business in 1957 downtown, and we've been serving the areas for 65 years this year. And I remember when I was a kid, be over at Fannin Elementary, two times a year, they would close our gymnasium for voting. And there'd be a bunch of signs out, and us kids would know there was something going on, because it was very exciting. We'd see our parents, our grandparents, and neighbors, and aunts and uncles stop at the schools to do their most powerful right, and that's to vote. Well, when I turned 18, I remember going to Buddy Wynn's office right down here and getting my voter registration. And to participate in voting and to protect my right, well, since then, a lot of things have changed. We have big gymnasiums now that pretty much stay empty, because except for basketball season or when they have school events. And there are not any voting booths there anymore. So it's a lot harder for local folks to go vote. It used to be where, when you, on voting day, you'd go to your nearest school district, and you would vote right there. Well, when people tell me that, you know, we live in one of the richest states in the country that is the most wealthiest country in the history of the world, and we don't have enough money to provide for voting locations, then I become very concerned about that, because our right to vote shouldn't be messed with. And I believe every citizen should have the opportunity to vote to their, at their nearest location. And I would hope that this commission would also agree with me on that. I sure do appreciate your time, and I hope y'all take these words the way they were presented, from a very caring citizen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Medder.
Well, Liz, you didn't call me first. Normally, when I'm here, you pick up me first. My name is Jay Medder. I am the Financial Fitness Director for the Brazos Valley, which is a fancy term for, I work with women that are basically single moms, and we help them get off of government assistance and, in many situations, in their own home in about a five-year timeframe. I'm here today to talk about the 7.5% cost of living increase. And I'm going to talk about it, first of all, as me doing what I do, but then also as a voter and a taxpayer. First of all, it is critical that we have this increase for anybody that is making less than, $40,000 a year or less, okay? That would be, if they're making $40,000 a year, that would be a $3,000 help for them in terms of the year. And for many of these folks, it's the difference, it keeps them from having to decide between, am I buying gas or am I buying groceries this month? And so that would be important. At 7.5% increase for $40,000, it would be a $3,000 increase per family. However, as a taxpayer, my suggestion is that you cap it at $3,000 per employee. So in other words, if someone's making $100,000, we're not giving them a $7,500 a year increase, we're giving them a $3,000 a year increase, because in that level, it's more of a choice between, are we going to be able to eat out this month, or do we need to eat our meals at home? And so that's really all I came to talk about. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I believe that was all that wanted to speak in this portion of citizens' input. So we will consider and take action on Agenda Items 3 through 25. Number three is resolution authorizing the use of an electronic signature of County Judge Duane Peters, Chief Elected Officer, for the county's contract with Justice Benefits, Inc., for the Federal Alien Assistance Program, and delegating the authority to use the electronic signature to the Brazos County Auditor.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number four is consider and take action on possible action on a county burn ban.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion.
Yes. Last week, we were hoping for rain. It did not come. We had some grass fires over the weekend, and although we were promised rain yesterday, I think maybe somebody got a sprinkle or two. There wasn't any at my house, and I think it's time for us to implement the burn ban.
I agree.
Commissioner, I concur with you. I think the fact that we looked at the science last week, and it wasn't quite time, we postponed it a week, and now we've not had rain. I think you're right on the money.
Yes, and I do concur.
And maybe that'll bring rain tomorrow.
Oh, I hope, I hope.
Listen, if other man says we'll have rain.
If we get enough rain this week, we can lift the ban next week. But right now, let's put it on.
That's true, but everything in my community is brown.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number five is approval to cancel the regular meeting of Commissioners' Court on Tuesday, July 12, 2022, due to a lack of quorum.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number six is consider and take action to set the early voting locations and hours for November 2022 general election.
Move to approve with an amendment, Judge. The voting locations that are listed there, we finally got it right on the Galilee Baptist Church. I have no problem with the other voting locations, but I would say that that problem that I've been addressing recently, the fact that residents in east Brazos County have to drive approximately 20 miles to get to a voting location, basically equates to a poll tax judge. What I'm asking is that we do one of two things. We already have two voting locations in Precinct 4, just because the Election Administrator Office happens to be in Precinct 4, so there are two there. I think the, I think that we could do two in Precinct 2, but then that would trigger that we would need to do two in the other precincts. So I'm asking that instead of Arena Hall, that we move the voting location for Precinct 2 to the Zion Church and Curtain.
I mean, I wouldn't be supportive of that. I mean, if you look at the population of the folks out in Commissioner Precinct 2, the biggest portion is going to be closest to Arena Hall, not Zion. And as far as driving 20 miles, if they wait till Election Day, they can vote at Zion. That is open on Election Day. It's the early vote. And of course, as you alluded to, we've got one in each Commissioner Precinct, and then we have the Elections Office, which would be open, and really, it wouldn't matter whether the Elections Office was in any one of the precincts. It just so happens it's in four. But, so we've got a location there. And it's for early vote. It gives everybody the opportunity in that two-week period, you know, to vote at any one of those locations. I mean, that's really the beauty of what we did a number of years ago, when we saw and were approved to do the central voting that, you know, I think it was 2014, the Centers, 2014 or 15, or something like that.
Right.
And it just makes voting so much easier. Roy mentioned that, you know, when he was young and the voting at the schools and all that, well, that was because you had to vote at that close, where your home location was at.
Right.
Now you can go to any location and vote, and Zion is going to be open for Election Day, so if the folks out there don't want to drive the 20 miles, they can wait till Election Day. But it wouldn't really make sense to me to move that, that location to, out to Zion, because the majority of the voters in Commissioner Precinct 2 would be closer to Arena Hall than they would be out at Zion.
Judge, I also don't represent Precinct 1, but I could see that the voters in South County would be somewhat disenfranchised by having to drive all the way to the College Station utility. So I guess what I'm asking, I already have asked the court to consider a Citizens Committee to look at this and for future voting, but I do believe that early voting is a great opportunity, particularly for our elderly and less mobile citizens, and that it's a great problem for them to have to get a ride to come in into town to vote. So I would ask that this early voting location be considered with the same urgency as we do the regular voting locations.
Well, and again, Election Day, those voting locations are all open. So if you really didn't want to drive in, whether you're in the south end or the east side, you know, you can wait till Election Day, and then the locations will all be open, and you have that opportunity. But, I mean...
If this is driven just by, I'm sorry, Judge.
Go ahead.
No, I say if this is driven just by economics, I would say that with our $250 million budget, $10,000 for a voting location is a pittance compared to people not being able to vote, possibly because they can't get into a voting location. So I think it's very important. I will tell you this, in Precinct 3, I had a discussion, but obviously, some people would like to have an early voting location at the MSC, but you have to pay for parking if you park at the MSC. That's the same situation that I'm talking about. We can't charge people to be able to vote. We want them to vote. So I'm asking that the court consider a possibility of two early voting locations in each precinct, particularly Precinct 2, which is the one that I represent.
Well, and I mean, it certainly would add cost, but it's also the workers. I mean, Trudy has told us that it's a problem finding people, most of the voters are retired, so they're up to the age that two weeks trying to open up another, you know, we've got five locations right now. If we tried to open up three or four more locations, and we keep those folks working for an extra two weeks, I mean, I think we will wear them out. I just, you know, I think the five locations, I think is probably hard enough to find folks that will work and want to work, and it's a difficult process. But then to add more locations, that's the whole reason we went to the central voting locations, was to be able to shrink down those numbers. And, I mean, I think we've done that, and I really think that, I don't think we disenfranchise anybody with the list that's there. I really don't.
I respectfully disagree, and I would just say that we are now an urban county judge. We've got 220, 230,000 people. It's a lot more than it was in 2015.
Well, I mean, it's, we'd probably, you know, it may be another 10,000 people or something from what it was in 2015. That's not really a, it's not like we've got 100,000 more people in in a couple of years. So, well, we had a couple of other folks that wanted to weigh in on number six, so if we want to, Elizabeth Cunha?
May I also, for the record, my concern still remains that we label this early voting. And the true purpose of early voting, and I can speak to that because I worked diligently as a young, I won't call the party, but as an active member of a certain party, to make sure it's understood that early voting is proposed for laborers, the common man can get to the polls. We have four days, October 24 through October 28. That's a Monday through Friday, so that's five, I'm sorry. But the purpose here says it's going to open at 8:00 a.m. and close at 5:00 p.m. I do not believe that this is meeting the purpose of a true early voting, open operation hours. People that work, like my mom worked as a nurse, if she had any problem getting anything done between 8:00 and 5:00, it just didn't, it couldn't be done. She was needed on her unit. There are manual workers that are not allowed to take more than 30 minutes for lunch, and this is just not practical. And I think you all know the situation. We have people going to work at 7:00 in the morning and getting off at 5:00 or 4:30. This is not practical for those that truly need to take advantage of early voting. I do appreciate that we're going to be open Saturday, 12 hours. That's, but, and even Sunday, from 10:00 to 4:00. My other objection to this is, or maybe I should say suggestion, is that we publicize this, because on the last election, it caught everyone in the public by surprise that the hours, the places, the locations, you know, those things that we rely on from our past history had changed. We need to publicize the hours, the locations of every election, every time. It should not be a secret. And I don't think that was the intent, but that's the fact. There was just too much confusion. If publishing the hours and the locations is a problem, and I'm like Commissioner Ford, I don't think that amount of money is going to break the county. But we could also place the notifications at the locations, at the voting centers. That in itself would be a big help to those that think that, you know, they're going to go at a certain time on a certain day. We need to do everything we can do to inform the public. We fight and have fought for the right to vote. I don't want to disenfranchise anyone, but when we withhold information, and I don't think it was intentionally, that's not where I'm going with this, but I think it's important that we do everything that we can to make sure that every voter knows. And please don't tell me about the internet in my community. There are families without computers. There are parents that are not computer savvy. And we have to address these things, because we want to hear the voice of everyone. And everyone has that right. Those are my concerns.
Okay, so Commissioner, let me... Okay, so Commissioner, let me just point out that the second week of early vote, it's from 7:00 to 7:00.
And it's available on the weekend as well.
Yeah, it, it goes through the weekend, so while the first-
And I've argued that, Judge, I don't, I, I haven't overlooked it, but why would we spend all that money on a full week that's not realistic for the people that need it? That's all. If we're going to spend the county's money, I'd like it to be spent wisely, in a way that we can make the things we want and need happen that everyone can take advantage of. And I, you, you know, I've had, had this conversation with you before. I realize there's a second week, but, you know, working stiffs have commitments too. So why not provide them every opportunity to vote early, if we're calling it early voting? Thank you.
And so, yeah, I appreciate the comments, Commissioner. So my thought would be the first week, even though it's said at 8:00 to 5:00, there are a lot of folks that will vote 8:00 to 5:00, and that might clear a lot of those out. And then that, of course, then you have that weekend that you can vote, and then the next weekend is 7:00 to 7:00. And so all the people who, who have 8:00 to 5:00 jobs that couldn't go vote the first week, then they have five days that they can actually go vote in the second week. And then they have, still have Election Day where, where all of the locations are open, and it's, that day is open from 7:00 to 7:00. So I, I really think that, without, you know, trying to find more election workers to try to keep all these polling locations open, I mean, I, I think it's a pretty good schedule, and I think it opens it up to pretty much anybody that wants to vote. If you want to vote, and I, and I will tell you, I mean, since the time that I turned age that I could vote, I don't think I've missed a single one. It didn't matter whether I had to, you know, drive to town to go vote, because at that time, you had to go to your election location, and it was only on Election Day. You had to have a specific reason to be able to vote by mail or an early vote. And I, I made sure I went and voted. It's important. It is, and, and I know it is to anybody who respects, you know, our system. So, but I really do think that what we've, what we have in place now is as good as you can get without, you know, you know, going off and doing extra things that I don't really think are necessary. But I, I appreciate the comments.
Respectfully, Judge, I disagree.
Okay.
The disenfranchised, or still disenfranchised, when you say 8:00 to 5:00 is okay, because some people, those that are privileged to be able to do it, they're going to do it. It's the, the man that works odd hours and odd jobs and have odd situations that I'm concerned about. Like many of you, I grew up with a mother that paid poll tax. But one thing my mother did was she made sure that her children witnessed that she paid her poll tax, that she was prepared to vote, and she carried us to the poll to see her vote. And that is something I treasure. My mother passed two years ago, but I treasure the fact that she was the kind of parent that not only did she want that for herself, but she wanted her children to know how important it was, and she instilled that in us. And I hope I haven't done her any disservice in my service for our community, but I just cannot agree that some of the people can get there and some can't, and that's all right. It's not all right, sir.
Commissioner Colley, are you suggesting that the October 24th through the 28th voting hours be from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM?
Really, I have suggested that if the, if the schedule is the problem, I don't mind the polling place being open at 12:00 to 8:00. That gives the person that works odd hours time to come after work. If you get off at 5:00, there's still three hours, you know? Many of us will vote as we leave work. So I, I think we could be more flexible. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I'd like to ask Ms. Hancock if she could see about what she would think about a, a 12 to 8:00 or early voting for the first week, if she would be able to get election workers.
And I brought this up to Ms. Hancock. This is not our first discussion.
No, it's not. I, I went back to the primary and looked at early voting for each location, and I sent the information to the court and broke it up into time slots to see when our, when our voters are voting. Our heaviest times are from 2:00 to 5:00 on the week that we don't have any early or late voting. On Tuesday and on Friday, I mean, on Thursday, both that week, that was our heaviest time. On the weeks that we were, that we are open till 7:00, we have very few people take advantage of the 7:00 to 7:00 in, from 5:00 to 7:00. That is one of the slowest times. On Wednesday, we voted 67. On Thursday, the last two days are always the heaviest. On Thursday and Friday, we did really good. We had 145 and 536. So we do really good the last couple of days for 7:00 to 7:00. I worry about the older people working that late, because when you work till 8:00 o'clock, it'll be dark, even with the time change, before the time change. Most of them don't like to drive after dark, so, I mean-
Well, if that's-
We also have a, a pretty large number of people who vote from 8:00 to 12:00. So you're, to me, you're taking away from people that you know are going to vote from 8:00 to 12:00 for people who may vote from 5:00 to 7:00, or 5:00 to 8:00, but-
I think we-
Thank you.
We should not look at the glass as being half full, but I think we could look at the fact that if it hadn't been offered, and we offer it, hopefully there is a change, that's all. And it improves the outcome of the voters' participation. And if 8:00 is too late, you know, I'm not saying hard and fast it has to be 8:00. If 7:00 is, is better, or even maybe 6:00 would be better than saying 5:00 o'clock. You know, that's the point I, I want to make.
Well, and again, that's up to the, to the court, so we'll work within the bounds that y'all set. Just, you know, just keep in mind that it is really hard to find retired people that can put in those kind of hours, so. And then I would like to make one more comment about adding a location for early voting and the distances that our voters have to drive. The election code does require, Texas Election Code 43.002 requires, that a voter does not drive more than 25 miles to their polling location when using vote centers. And that's mainly for Election Day, because the vote centers are more strategically placed. It doesn't really, it's not, doesn't really fall under the rules for early voting, but I did check the maps and make sure that we are in compliance, and we are in compliance from the south to the early voting place in College Station, and then also from the northern part, the northern part of the county that touches Robertson County, the farthest part out to Arena Hall. Both of those are within compliance of that 25 miles.
Thank you, Trudy.
Thank you, Trudy. Elizabeth Cunha, there you are.
I am standing up, Ms. Colley. Okay. I, I am speaking today in support of offering MSC as an early voting polling location. And just as a matter of consideration, they do offer free parking. When you go there to vote, there's two, a couple of spaces at the bottom level of the MSC parking garage, reserved for voters. And when you finish voting, you get a, a little paper that you put into the machine. So it is, there is free voting there, free parking there. But I begin by quoting an Eagle article published in May 5th of 2020. And in it, Kenny Wiley, who was the reporter, he offered some historical data. 769 voters voted on Election Day at the MSC in November 2016. 1,581 voters voted on Election Day at the MSC in November of 2018. Remember, that's an off-year election, just like the one we're about, Dick's experience. In March of 2020, the election that he was specifically writing about, there were 1,342 voters that voted on Election Day at the MSC. That caused a more than two-hour wait time at the MSC on that election day, according to the article. The article quotes Trudy Hancock's advice to voters in response to that situation. Here's, here's her quote from the article. "We have an election coming in November that we will need to staff heavily," Hancock said. She advised early voting in the fall for A&amp;M students on campus. "We do the full two weeks of early voting out there, so voting early would be a great way to help lessen that line for Election Day," Hancock said. That's the direct quote from the article. Yes, indeed. I hope that early voting access given in November of 2016, 2018, and 2020 continue in 2022. An MSC polling place situates a ballot box within its arms' reach of about 70,000 Brazos County residents who live or work or attend school on campus. As we grapple with traffic congestion, this is an important consideration. Traffic congestion solutions are not found solely in building roads, but also in effectively, are effectively addressed by providing diversified access points. Additionally, the two-week visibility of an MSC polling place expressly invites our youngest voters to the table. Two weeks of early voting provides signage inside the MSC that directs students to the small room used for voting, and those signs remind students that there's an election happening and affords them some lead time to look into ballot issues and decide which day is best for them to fit informed voting into their schedules. It is similar to the opportunity given to the rest of us, except I might argue this awareness and access are even more crucial to campus patrons, as it presents an opportunity to invite democratic engagement among our newest voters, who have not yet developed the tenacity of a voting habit to help them circumnavigate the hurdles. They will also live longest with the election outcomes. Offering City Hall in lieu of the MSC is not an even exchange. The MSC is a pedestrian and micro-mobility-friendly option for residents already on campus. City Hall, according to Google Maps, is a 29-minute walk to City Hall, and then a 29-minute walk back. Before any time is spent actually voting, a campus pedestrian voter will spend an hour just getting to and from City Hall. I am concerned that this decision has to be made in the summer, when so many of them are not here to speak for themselves. They are dependent on those elected to represent them, to act in their best interest. How many of them will actually vote? That is up to them. Providing continuous access is up to you. Please retain an early voting location at the MSC. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I'm willing to further amend, six, if Commissioner Precinct Three would, would like to, or Commissioner Precinct Four would like to make that amendment on the ti, on the voting times. I'm willing to entertain both of those, if, if the commissioners would like. Also, Commissioner Precinct One, if, if we need a second early voting location down there, I would even add that to my amendment.
Thank you, sir. I would like to offer the amendment to the October 25th through October 28th. The hours I will recommend is 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM that week. And we need to publicize that. And every other time and place.
I would like to add that to my amendment, then, Commissioner, if that's okay.
It is, thank you. And I'll second your amendment.
I, I'll restate it in a second.
Do we not have other speakers?
Yeah, we have some others that wanted to speak. Amy Algee?
All right. I warned my kids I was coming to stir up some good trouble today, so. First, again, going back to, I came here last week to talk about my experience with polling sites, and not to be overly aggressive, but the county chairs were blamed this past time for the polling site location, Galilee, being closed down. And I'd like for people to see how polling sites are decided. I'm not sitting up there. I'm not the one who ultimately decides what sites are, are used. So I just want to be clear about that, as we're all watching this process take place, that ultimately the buck stops with the commissioner's court. That being said, I also, as Ms. Colley had said, I also have noticed the 8:00 to 5:00 time, and if nothing else, it just, like she said, the time should be for the working citizen, and that seems like an odd time. One thing, I think, my understanding, and probably a lot of people don't know this, but the Secretary of State just has told us, and correct me if I'm wrong, but they're the ones who said you have to have these election days, and you have to have sites open these election days, or early voting sites. And because of that, I know it puts strains on your funds. You know, it's just something to consider when you see legislation that perhaps if our state legislators proposed having less days but longer days, that might benefit us. It's just an idea, but, I mean, again, I believe the Secretary of State determines that we have these voting days open, but if we do, it should be in consideration of our working-class citizens. As far as additional sites, I have to second also the MSC being open. And also, I have received information that in addition to having free parking, there's also free transportation, probably through Texas A&amp;M Transportation, to MSC on Election Day. So the parking and transportation should not be an issue there. Another possibility would be considering Castle Heights. That would be slightly closer to Curtain, and would benefit the, the residents there as well. So perhaps as you're looking at early voting locations, add Castle Heights and the MSC. So I believe that was, I think that was most of what I had to say. Oh, no, it's not, sorry. I forgot. One important thing. Last week, I also proposed adding an insert in our utility bills, both in College Station and Bryan. As Ms. Colley also said, not everyone has access to the internet, and whether that's residents within the city or out of the city, we know, we know that this especially affects our rural residents. So we cannot count on access to internet to inform voters. Since there were, everybody gets a utility bill, I propose that the commissioner's court work with Atmos and BTU and see about providing some sort of insert with information as we approach the election days. So thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. I would like to point out that while this is the process for the general election, and it is the commissioner's court responsibility to name those locations, for the primary, it is a different law, and it says that the, that the parties have that responsibility. So, and that's where we had those problems. And I'm not trying to blame anybody on that. I mean, we all took responsibility for whatever it was, and, and we're past it. But I just, I would like to point that out, that this, this process is for the general election, and, and it is the commissioner's court's responsibility to do it, so. But thank you. I think we had, Roy Flores wanted to come back up, I think.
Do want to talk about consistency. When there may not be some people that come to Brazos County or to the courthouse during certain hours, that shouldn't mean that we should close the courthouse for those certain hours that-
hours, that there's not a high volume of people. This is not for the convenience of the court or for the workers. It's for the convenience of the taxpayers. So 7:00 to 7:00 should be all the way across the board for the two weeks and on Election Day. Keep it simple. Keep it consistent. I remember when Mary Ward used to help do the voting. My mom was a precinct judge chair over at Fannin Elementary. I remember how hard those people worked. And I remember they had paper ballots, which we just, of course, recently got, but they kept up with the paper ballots. They kept up with all this paperwork and got the vote in and presented it in a timely manner. Now we have these fancy computers. We have a whole department for voting, and we can't even get locations on the county website proper. And I've already mentioned that to y'all last year about this problem. I sent an email to every one of y'all, and I only got one response, and that was from Russ Ford. Said he was going to look into it. So y'all are very aware of these problems, and we need to make it consistent for all voters. Because again, it's not for the convenience of the court or for the county workers. It's for the convenience of the voter and the right to vote. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Roy. Eleanor Vesali?
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. I am going to start off with beating a dead horse to follow up with my counterpart. Amy said, Eleanor Vesali, Republican Party Chairman. I have spoken with past Republican Party chairpersons, past counterparts, Democrat Party, and so will reiterate that in that process and all those years, we have never been asked to select the locations. I didn't speak to this the first time it came up because this was new information to me, and as you know, I like to do my research and get my facts straight. I always say, we may not agree, but at least I'll give you all the facts. And so that's where we're at, but believe you me, we will now be asserting our authority when that comes around, and we will work together. It's not going to be about doing what we've always done because clearly that's not always right. My recommendation after that, small election and special election, I think there was a mention of continuity, I would strongly recommend that on those smaller-size elections, when you have an early voting center location due to the lack of information or difficulty to get information out to voters, to not close it on Election Day. I think that's where a lot of the confusion came from. So I'd like to recommend that. I would concur with Councilwoman Cuna. If you would please consider, instead of City Hall, moving it back to the MSC. Those of us who work elections are fully aware that the parking is validated or free, and so that's not an issue. But I think the MSC is an important location, especially if you're going to talk about data and the amount of people that have access to that center. Speaking as someone who helps get volunteers together, works elections, and is expected to be in charge of those volunteers, we will follow your direction, but just a reminder, we are not paid, I'm not paid, my counterpart is not paid, our volunteers aren't paid. I understand that there is to be flexibility, but I also know that a knee-jerk reaction to something is not always the best solution. So I would hope you would take into consideration the fact that we're already working right now to present Trudy and her office with lists of people who are used to following with that continuity, an expectation of a certain schedule on certain dates. So I think after this November, I'd be more than happy to sit down with Trudy, Amy. We can look at the numbers, we can look at the data, and then, within that off-year, know, hey, next time, we're going to need volunteers from 12:00 to 7:00 on X amount of days or at these more locations. Then we can recruit properly. My last thing, I'm wrapping up. I mentioned this last time. We reference the Internet, not because we know not everybody has access to the Internet, but to emphasize there was no intent to hide. So we still have an information issue. I've reached out to WTAW to hopefully have myself and my counterpart on. We are elected officials, and like everybody else, should be invited on to talk about these things and push that information out. Hi, KBTX. Hopefully, they'll invite us early morning on the couch as well. I don't see why not. And I hope you commissioners will take that opportunity as we move into the fall to remind, 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 anytime you're on the radio or in front of the paper, any changes that you decide on today. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another? Ready? I'd like to, again, say that I move for acceptance of Agenda Item Six, the early vote schedule, with the following amendment. That early voting, October 24th through 28th, be from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That early voting locations be added at Zion Church in Curtain, at Milliken, Community Center, and at MSC. That's my amendment. That would give two voting locations in each county, and I looked at that Castle Heights voting location, Judge, and I think that's in four, so that would give us three and four. So I'm trying to make it per the statute where we've got two in each precinct.
So you've made a motion?
With an amendment.
With an amendment. Is there a second to that amendment?
I would... Judge, I do have one comment.
Good.
Even though the main early voting location, my office, is not considered in the two, like, it's not considered in the count, so if you're going to do one in every location, you're going to have to add another one in four.
Great.
So Castle Heights, and if you would...
I'll...
That was going to be my objection.
I'll make the amendment that Castle Heights be added to Precinct Four.
What, I'm sorry. One other thing. These are churches. Has anybody contacted these? Because that's a Sunday morning and a Wednesday service, that they cannot use that room or the area that we vote in at all because there will be election equipment set up in there, and for security purposes, that the rooms have to be able to be locked and that equipment secured during those times. So that's another thought.
Well, and that's part of the problem of making these amendments and suggestions from here. I'm sure you've already contacted these locations and made sure that they're going to be available in November for that two-week period. And for us to take action today with what's really, it's unknown. We don't know whether those churches are willing to segment those areas off to where they can be locked up and not used on the weekends, or whether they even be available or not. I, you know...
Can this be table for today, or are we under a timeframe that we've got to take action today?
Well, I think I can speak up for the Castle Heights community. They actually are wanting to support and be open, and they've expressed that in their neighborhood meetings that they have, but I don't see anyone present from Castle Heights. And I'm not in position to speak for them, but I'm relaying what I've been told.
The cities and schools are required to order their election before they start accepting filings. They start accepting filings on, I think, either July 23rd or 25th, and so I know that most of them have their orders and notices to go on their agenda for the middle of the month, so...
So there is a time sensitive to move forward with something. I would, I'd be reluctant to support, you know, changes at this point, you know, with, so, but we do have a motion and a second with those amendments. Did you have anything, Commissioner? Did you have anything you wanted to do?
Well, yeah, I just, you know, the, one of the issues that's been brought up is be consistent, and if we're going to change the voting hours for the first week, my suggestion would be is that those voting hours be extended to 7:00 to 7:00 instead of 11:00 to 7:00. If we're going to do that, let's make it uniform across all of the early voting period of time if we're going to amend that. That would be my suggestion.
I certainly concur.
Concur.
That was the proposal about two years ago, but that was found to be too expensive, but I certainly concur.
Judge, if you'll allow me to amend one more time, I'd like to change that from 11:00 to 7:00 to 7:00, please.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we need to vote on that first, the 7:00 to 7:00.
Okay, so the first amendment would be to make it consistent for the first week and the second week to be open from 7:00 to 7:00. So let me ask one question because, Trudy, I mean, I know that that will then require you to go back and find election workers who are willing to spend that 12 hours a day, and I don't know how hard that'll be. I mean, so what happens if, you know, we're not able to find workers? What are we going to do then? I mean, I think there's...
The polling place would be understaffed, and it would just cause additional problems, delays for the voters, whether or not we were able to even, you know, open a location. For in November, we have to be equally staffed between Democrats and Republicans. So say one side can find workers and one side cannot, then, I don't know.
Trudy, is there any problem with splitting the hours rather than having a person there from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.?
Yes, ma'am. We had that problem in the primary.
You have?
Especially out at MSC. We had some workers that were told they only had to work till lunch, and they left before their relief got there, and we ended up having that polling place, one of our busiest polling places, only had three people out there working the rest of the day. We ended up having to find staff to go. So that's really a hard thing to do, to try to staff it in shifts. It just, in past experience, it just has not worked.
Okay.
Thank you.
So let me, I guess, let me ask, because there's an amendment to keep the polling places open 7:00 to 7:00 the first week, do you have any suggestion? I mean, I'm hearing potential problems, but, you know...
We won't know until we start contacting the workers to see if they're willing to work that two full weeks of those hours.
Okay.
We'll just have to wait and see.
Okay. Okay, so I guess my thought, and this is mine, but I would need to express it, my thought would be to leave the proposal as is with already knowing that we will have problems probably to find enough workers for two weeks, 7:00 to 7:00, and then working over the weekend for whatever hours we're open there. Also, I mean, I think it's going to be difficult at best, and it may be much worse, and we may have, if we've got, trying to open up...